Everyone, if we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, it is 6:00 PM. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great power of our Constitution, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And Jenny, if you could do the poll. Collins, here. Toyle, Iker.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Owen, here.
Here.
Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Adebayev. Here. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so welcome. We will go ahead and start with public comments. So I, do I have all the comment cards?
All the ones that have been given.
Okay, awesome. So before we start public comments, I just want to ask a couple of things. So we do ask that anyone presenting state your name, address, and topic of comment. Each person will be provided up to three minutes to speak to the board. When someone goes beyond three minutes, I will politely ask you, tell you that your time has expired. Please know the public comment section is an opportunity for residents to address the board, but it's not meant to be a question and answer session with the board. Any question posed to the board will not be answered during this meeting, but instead speakers are asked to leave their information with Brett Clark, who I believe you met earlier, and someone from our administrative team will contact you. So thank you so much for understanding these guidelines, and we will go ahead and get started. And I do believe we are, it's a tag team effort.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So if it's okay, let's go ahead and start with Brian Koff. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually doesn't work, so. It's a small enough room, so appreciate you, appreciate the time. And give the reading, the prepared comments due to the time. He said, my name is Brian Koff, address is 830 South Knight. My wife Julian and I have been residents of Park Ridge for 22 years, and we have one former, one current, and one incoming D-207 student. So the topic we're here to talk about, or we're here to talk about, is related to de-tracking and standard-based grading. And ideally, what we'd like to do is create, you know, create an ongoing conversation about, you know, the reversal of both of these policies that are being implemented in our high schools and are homogenizing the educational experience of our students. De-tracking and standard-based grading are often touted as solutions to educational inequality, but they're not always the silver bullets that are made out to be. The performance of D-207 schools on the math SAT is already indicating that this method is not, may not be right for our students, with scores dropping across all three schools instead of increasing since the changes weren't limited. First, to address de-tracking. It assumes that all students learn at the same pace and in the same way, which, you know, I think we all know isn't true. When students are placed in mixed ability classrooms, teachers may need to teach to the middle, which can lead to some students feeling left behind and others unchallenged, perpetuating inequality rather than addressing it. While the intention behind de-tracking is often to promote equity by providing all students with access to the same curriculum and resources, in practice, it can result by widening this gap. Without the support and resources tailored to their needs, students who require additional assistance can fall behind, perpetuating these, the educational disparities. And similarly, de-tracking can lead to a lack of challenge for high achieving students and may overlook the importance of student preference and interests. Some students may thrive in more specialized and accelerated track, where they can engage with challenging material at a pace that suits them. De-tracking eliminates this option and may limit opportunities for students to pursue their passions and interests. So I'm gonna pause here. I know my turn is not up, but this is a breaking point, so I'll let it go.
And then if it's okay, I'll go ahead and introduce you, and I apologize if I don't get your last name. So George Altembakis?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, George.
Okay, my name is George Tiamakis, 508 North Knight. I've had three children go through the system, they're all graduated. One's still in college, one in grad school, and one in law school. And I will pick up where Brian left off. Switching to standard-based grading, this policy might seem fair, but it reduces education to a checklist rather than an individual journey of discovery and growth, leading to a narrowed focus on specific learning outcomes at the expense of broader educational goals. Like de-tracking, teachers may feel pressured to prioritize covering specific standards rather than fostering critical thinking, creativity, and holistic understanding of each student as an individual. By breaking down learning into discrete standards, it can overlook the complexity and interconnectedness of an individual's knowledge and skills and may not accurately reflect a student's overall abilities or growth. One student may excel in one area and struggle in another. Nuances can create a sense of competition among students, while others do maybe just the opposite. A standards-based approach may mask these nuances and create a sense of competition among students as they are constantly compared against predefined standards that may not take factors related to an individual student into account. This lack of individual contact can lead to an unfair assessment, subjectivity in grading, and can foster a fixed mindset where students give up and embracing learning as a continuous process of improvement and exploration. Finally, there are many students in this district that would like to go to college and some that would even like to pursue careers in highly competitive fields where a high school GPA really matters. Their impacts of standard-based grading may not be really, may be, may not be readily apparent. For example, college admissions officers may not be familiar with the intricacies of standard-based grading, leading to potential undervaluing of a student's true abilities. Also, standard-based grading works off a year-long assessment instead of a semester-based grades. Under standardized-based grading, colleges are not able to receive first semester grades to make enrollment or merit-based scholarships decisions because there are no semester grades. Ultimately, multi-tracking and standard-based grading fail to address the root cause of educational inequality. Instead of homogenizing education, we should focus on providing individualized support and resources to help every student reach their first potential as an individual, whatever that may be. Balancing inclusive access to material with opportunities for students to learn at their, at their correct pace is crucial for creating a supportive and enriching educational environment for all students. That's how we create a truly equitable and empowering learning environment for all. We both thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're right on time. You're back. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, let's go ahead and move forward. And so before we move on to the update from our superintendent, I think it's important that we recognize Dr. Wallace and his service to our district. And so we have a couple of things for you. So first, I will present you with this. If you want to open it, it's up to you if you would like me to open it. I was debating.
Very nice. It is a lovely bowl.
Very nice.
With D-207, to honor your service in education, to education. Thank you for your dedication to our students and staff. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. And if I can go ahead and read, we are also presenting you with this award. So this award is presented to Dr. Ken Wallace in recognition of 19 years of faithful service to the youth of Main Township High School District 207, Cook County, Illinois, by order of the Board of Education of Main Township High School District 207, and presented this June 2024. You're welcome.
One, two. I'm gonna get used to paper right here.
Yes, yes. And so with that, I actually am going to hand it over to my colleague, board member Lee, to share a few words. And of course, anyone else who would like to share words can also do that.
Thank you, President Obama. I have a tool, I have a one from Illinois State Senator Laura Murphy. She have a special certificate of recognition honoring Dr. Ken Wallace. Shall I sit down and read this, okay, or?
What, however you want to do.
So the Illinois Senate of the 103rd General Assembly of the State of Illinois acknowledges Superintendent Dr. Ken Wallace, Main Township High School District 207, in recognition of 19 years of dedication and service to Main Township High School. Serving as a superintendent since 2009 and calls for the commemoration of a successful career and further extend his wishes for happiness and health in his retirement, offered by Senator Laura Murphy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just wanna say a few words. After serving about my third term, 11-plus years getting to know Dr. Wallace, I have seen and experienced so many wonderful things, especially the leadership tool. Throughout attending many different conferences, national conferences, and meeting with the different superintendents and leaderships. And I have many times asked how they overcome or handle the challenges and how do they make that positive changes unto it. And they have shared many things, and they have, everyone has seen a great challenges, and so have we too in our district. The big difference is Dr. Wallace has been, how he handles the challenges in a most positive way, especially during our pandemics that we never ever faced in our hundreds of years, I guess, in our life. And we have seen so many difficult challenges for the students, the community, the parents, and also staff and so on. And the how we see from Dr. Wallace's handling and such is most impressive way of handling it. So that was very impressive of such. And through these challenges, how he brings that to the positiveness is the most important aspect of it. And also, I'm very pleased to see Dr. Wallace's, his leadership on organizational resilience, that we are always facing a such challenges and despite all the hard times, whenever we are seeing it, he was always in firsthand through letting the board members know and find the creative, positive way to handling and such. I probably, during my 11-plus years, during that pandemic times, I probably received the most emails from the parents and community, and I'm sure everyone else too, and that was quite shocking. And they are all concerned and such. And how Dr. Wallace handling it, and after that, we are seeing the trend, the changes, and so on, has been most impressive. So on behalf of the board member and myself, during getting to know you, I thank you so much for all your wonderful services and leadership. And whatever you do, wherever you go, I'm sure that we wish you the best of everything. Thank you, Ken.
All right. Thank you all very much. I'm gonna go ahead and jump into the update, and it's gonna be well timed, hopefully. I'm gonna start with our journey, and it's been a really, really, really cool journey. And we have been known for innovation, but one thing I can tell you about innovation, innovation in education ought to be sort of part of the landscape, and it turns out it's just the opposite. The hardest thing to do in life and in education is actually change. You meet resistance at every corner. And I can remember getting here in 2005 and thinking we would be so far ahead of the curve. Instead, what I found was we were still taking attendance on a piece of paper and putting it on a clip on doors, and kids would come around and collect it and take it down. There wasn't a single computer in any classroom, no LCDs, we were still using overhead projectors. I was actually kind of shocked. But it turns out that finding a deficit in the moment actually is an opportunity. And so we started to make some changes, and at that time, waiting actually turned out to be an advantage. And we got a lot of stuff done in a short amount of time. Price points had fallen. Bought first laptops for teachers, put the first LCDs in our classroom, hired some key people, and we made some changes and continued to move. Got lucky and got the union to agree that we would do all-in coaching for our teachers. And time flies, and this year, it's 10 years. Every one of our teachers has a coaching plan every year. No district in America does that, none, not a one, except this one. What does that do for you? Well, it teaches your teachers how to differentiate instruction, for example. So that in any classroom, there is a multitude of different types of students in the classroom with different needs in different moments. And it helps our teachers be able to understand that, to account for that, and to differentiate their instruction in any level of a classroom. Continuing to move on, we actually, and Sean, I'm gonna thank all the team members here, but I'm gonna give Sean credit for this. We are, like some districts in Illinois, we're in the state's competency pilot. Competency is how you actually learn. I used to say, you know, we ought to teach in classrooms like we do judo. I studied some judo in college. And in real life, whether you're riding a bike, whether you're learning judo, whether you're learning to play the trombone or the drums, you're on a journey. And there are, in judo, for example, they have belts, they have a belt system. Might call that standards. On a bike, you ride, you don't ride, you start with training wheels, and you evolve, and you're on this journey. In judo, if you're studying moves and you're testing on those moves and you can't accomplish them yet, they don't say, well, you're an F, you failed, you leave. Instead, what they say is you're not there yet, you're on your journey. And most of what we learn in life is actually just like that, you're on a journey. And so competency education actually reflects the way that your brain works. See, the way the brain works is if I wrote a word puzzle over there on the whiteboard, I should have done that. If I wrote a word puzzle on there and you looked at it, your brain would actually start trying to solve it. And you would do that ad infinitum until you solved it. And if you want to know why kids play video games for like 10 hours and barely stop to go to the restroom, it's because when you're learning and you're trying to solve a puzzle, it creates a dopamine drip in your, in your brain. Neuroscientists will say you actually can get addicted to learning. And your brain will do this continuously until you introduce one thing, and that is punishment for being wrong. And we have 200 years in this country of really, really bad assessment practices that have punished, separated, and actually demotivated learning because we punish far too often. We use assessment as a tool instead of assessment for learning. And there's, there's a lot of science behind this. So we're on this journey in competency. The truth is, we launched first in math, the hardest probably been to launch yet. Our first three years in math, we went from having 90% of our incoming freshmen access what we would consider, I don't like this term, but let's, let's use it, college-bound math. Okay, 90% of our students used to get into that track, and of that 90%, about 83% would pass. When we went to integrated math, and I'm so glad Melissa Dudich is here tonight, because Melissa Dudich is probably, not probably, and I said this to Sean the other day, but one of the most transformational things I've ever seen in education, Melissa Dudich led it. So I'm glad you're in this chair, and I'm glad you're here tonight. So previously, the way we used to do math with algebra, algebra II, geometry, all of that, 90% of kids came in, 83% of those passed. We go to integrated math, nearly 100% of our students now accessing that math. Of that 100%, about 90+ somewhere 90 to 95% of our kids, and they are passing their math now. More importantly, because it's not just integrated, it's also competency-based, it's also problem-based. And integrated math, by the way, is the way the rest of the world teaches math. So if you want to know, well, why is US behind all these countries on the piece of testing? Most of the other countries actually do integrated math, because in real life, when you're solving problems, no one says, well, hang on a second, let me get my algebra book out and solve that problem. They apply math globally and holistically depending on the problem. So we go to integrated math, we go to competency math, 100% of our kids get in. 90+% actually are passing now. More importantly, we survey our kids, what do they tell us? I can do math now. I wasn't a math person coming into high school, and now they begin to tell us at a higher rate, I can do math and I'm good at it, I have competency. So just like in judo, maybe I didn't pass my tai toshi test on the first time, but I'm in journey, I'm in journey. And that's called assessment for learning, and there's a term for it, it's called formative assessment. You're just not there yet, you haven't failed, you're just not there yet. More importantly, the first three years, and this is really, really important. Keep in mind, year one of the launch, first year of the pandemic. So our kids, our freshmen that year, when integrated math won, start that year, in March, they go home. Okay? Second year, they're in a hybrid. Third year, they're finally back. So that first-year cohort that went three years and took the SAT, those kids with that treatment, and that's what it was, that treatment, those kids improved across our district by over 5% in SAT. Meanwhile, every high school district in the surrounding area, the Nutreers, the Stephenson's, the Prospects, the Percy's, their SAT scores fell 1 to 9%. That was the range, they fell 1 to 9%. Now, I would take the local success for our kids. I would take our kids feeling like I am a mathematician. We'll meet, we'll know in five or 10 years whether or not there's a bounce on SAT or not. That's not what we chase, we chase actual learning. There's no big correlation between SAT and whether kids are actually gonna be successful in life. So math, we just started English this year. Like anything else, there's challenges with it. I was an English teacher, English is actually the easiest thing to teach from a competency standpoint. And the mistake that we make is we do a single assessment of something, and on that one day, we say, well, you're good, you're bad, and we, and we move on. And what the research says is that's actually not enough. If you want a student to be a good writer, you know what you have to do? Practice writing. You have to do it regularly, you have to have that as a habit. You want the student to be a good speaker, you know what you have to do? You have to practice that regularly. That's a standard. You speak well, you write well, you listen well. Those are actually standards, and you do those on a repeated basis. That's what leads to good learning. Not taking a single test in a moment. If you want to know reliably if a student is good at something, you practice that and you assess that on a regular basis. And that's what competency really is about, it reflects real learning. So we're on that journey. Along this way, we, you know, we got to be the district that back in 2007 called Google. You want to be in the K-12 space and four university partners. We've gotten to do some really, really cool things. Our latest journey and probably the, you know, people misuse the word innovation. I've never thought about it as innovation. I've thought about it like, what does the research say improves kids? Improving teachers in the classroom, that's like number one. That's the thing we can do the most to improve learning for any student. Integrated and individual career planning is by far solving one of the biggest problems facing our kids in America. We have as good a program in this district as anybody in America, I believe that. And we're so far away from being as good as we need to be. It's that complex of a journey. But we're solving student debt, underemployment, the trends that are happening in the workforce. And so we're really taking on big, big, big issues. I remember 10 years ago, starting with Laura Cook and Bart Delarga, this idea of having an individual career plan. I remember our teachers then saying, oh my gosh, Kent, don't you know, college is the place where kids go and figure it out. They have to go to college and figure it out, which is a really expensive conce. If you've got all the money in the world and you can afford to send your kids to college and let them figure it out for five or six years. But 10 years ago, a lot of our staff had seven-year-olds. Today, they've got 17 and 18-year-olds. And the thing I hear from our staff more than anything else is, oh my God, my kid goes to Pippin, all the schools, because 84% of our teachers live outside of the district. Our kids go to, and a lot of the fancy schools. And my kid's getting ready to graduate, my kid's ready to go somewhere. They have no idea what they want to do, and our school hasn't done one thing to prepare them for what's gonna go next, they just worry about, just get into college. It's never been a high, high enough bar. So staying with a good idea is highly underrated. Persistence, persistence. I'm really proud of the work we've done. You know, looking at probably the eight or 10 years it took to get the board ready to do a referendum, and then getting the referendum done and getting it passed and looking at our buildings today, it's been a pretty amazing journey. So I'm gonna move on from that and just pick some highlights here. This is our growth of our college enrollment. This is actually the measurement that probably matters more than anything else. And thanks to the work of this team, and in particular Sean, we are closer today to being able to allow our students to get an associate's degree before they leave than ever before. And just look at the exponential growth. We almost topped 8,000 this year. And if you look at the growth particularly in dual credit, 37 in 2012, over 3,000 this year for the first time ever. Why does that matter? Well, in Illinois, if a student takes an AP course and they get a four or five, what Illinois colleges and universities can do is they can give you elective credit for that. And they do often give elective credit. If one of our kids gets English 101 and English 102, both of which we teach here, they've got six transcripted credits that Illinois colleges and universities have to give those kids credit for. Two of our three high schools are majority BIPOC. We have higher poverty rates today than we've, than we've ever had generally, and from a trend from about the turn of the century on. More diverse, aiding languages other than English spoken homes for our kids. We have to really think about solving these issues on a big, big scale. This is one of the big ways that we solve. And our, our enrollment continues to climb, really pretty much across all of our student areas. I'm really proud, the second-to-last bullet point. Student with IEP enrollment was the highest he's ever been, 143 in dual credit, and total courses 200. And that needs to continue to climb, and I know with Katie's leadership, Sean's leadership, it will do that. Our career pathways, we started with 74 business partners that we inherited from our internship program. We crossed 1,200 this year. Now, 1,200, unduplicated, it's about 980, 970. Why is it 1,200? Well, because any one business partner, like an advocate, for example, is actually 30 business partners because of all the various pathways that I, that our kids can go in. No one has this, no one has this. Sean can attest to this. We have a district, every few weeks, call us and ask us what we're doing and how we're doing it. And it's because of this, because it serves every kid. It assumes that every student needs to be thinking about a career, whether they are going to go into an apprenticeship, into a certification, into an associate's, into a four-year degree or a four-year and beyond degree. They need to be looking at the return on investment for any of those pathways. We've ignored one of the biggest problems in this country. When I was coming up, the average house cost 2.3 of the average household income. Today, it's 6.5. That's just one problem. Couple that with flattened wages, our kids are going into a far, far different world than they've ever gone into. And rather than being caught flat-footed, we've paid attention to the economic trends that our kids are going into. We are not perfect, we will never get to perfect, but we get a little bit better every day. And that is an ethos. Thanks to SchoolLeaks, SchoolLeaks, their founder, CEO, I had dinner with her about five years ago, and she told me what she was trying to do. I explained our career programming and said, if you build a program that will meet our needs, you have the best program in America. To her credit, she said her programmers worked with our team for a couple of years before we ever used them. They are storming the market because they build features like, I want to know for alumni, if a student went through a teaching pathway, an engineering pathway, whatever, when they leave us, where are they five years after they leave us? We want to do accountability in this country, that's the question we ought to ask. That's your kid doing five years after they leave us, and what did we do to make a difference? That's, that's accountability. You want real accountability, that's accountability. How much money are they making? How much debt do they have? Questions we never even consider to ask, long overdue questions. Thanks to Sean, thanks to our career team, we have better data today than we've ever had. Three, over 3,000 of our students have set a goal. Now, those are disproportionately our seniors, as they should be, and some juniors. But almost all of our students have set a goal within their plan. SchoolLeaks built a feature, an alumni feature, so that we could study that question about how our kids are doing. And this is helping us get so much better data, we can break down what our kids are interested in, and then we partner with those 1,200 business partners. We have a long way to go. We aren't anywhere close to serving all of our students equitably in this program. We have major transportation issues. Some of our students are privileged to be able to drive or have parents drive them. Others can't, can't solve that problem. That is a problem that this board, this, this team is gonna need to think about moving forward. We have to solve that problem. We have to solve that problem. I want to single out Mary on this one. As masterful a job as anyone could have done on our referendum, we touched 1,571 square feet of school space, and we did it for a buck 39 a square foot. You couldn't remodel your bathroom for that. And you look at our buildings and the work that was done, amazing, amazing work. Amazing work. And we've got schools that will serve these communities for 50 years to come. This is an area of growth. If you're paying attention to the world and what's happening in the workplace, there is a dynamic trend, and it's happening right before our feet. People are hiring students with certifications and skills and less and less with degrees. That's the real world. That's what's happening. And degrees are always going to have a place, and they're always going to have currency, and they're always going to have value, but not every degree is bulletproof. Historically, somewhere between 35 and 50% of students with college degrees have been underemployed. That means they're working in a job that didn't require a degree or the job that they're working in doesn't pay a livable wage. 35 to 50%. And those are students who graduated. What about the kid that went three years and didn't graduate or four years and didn't graduate and accumulated a lot of debt? You want to solve big problems? This is the problem to solve. In 2006, there was a half a trillion dollar worth of loan debt in the U.S. market. Today, we're approaching $2 trillion. It is not sustainable. And we either do something about it at this level, it's not going to solve itself. And this is the work that we're doing. These kids can go to work right from our buildings, make a livable wage, or be on a path to make a livable wage. Our certified nursing assistant, Jill Schnabel, look at our YouTube channel. Jill Schnabel is one of the best stories that we have, and we've got a lot of really good ones. Jill got a CNA at West. Now, Jill could have done anything. There's this belief that kids in current tech ed courses are their career kids, and that college bound or AP kids are over here. Jill took a bunch of AP courses. Jill got a CNA degree from West. Jill went to work right out of high school with that CNA degree, began working on her bachelor's, went to work for Advocate, and Advocate is paying for her bachelor's degree in nursing. She will come out with zero debt in a job that's in high demand, making a livable wage. That's the design that we're trying to get to. That's what really matters more than anything else. And a lot of these other things right here will take you right into direct employment. And what we're finding in our, especially our technology space and our health space, they want our kids so bad, they will not only hire them, they will pay for future education. So the value of what we've been able to do, working with our business partners, can't be overlooked. Again, we are nowhere close to perfect, and we probably never will be. Other highlights, we finally got partnership, partner data sharing agreements with our elementary district. Districts, that's going to help us really serve our kids when they come on. We are very close on the Displayne's SRO agreement. The new board president may have to make some calls for us, but we're waiting for that to come back. Hopefully, you guys will see it in August. We successfully closed on the Klein Farm. We're now ready to go to the next phase of the project. I think the Park Ridge Historical Society wants to maintain a couple of antique tractors, and that'll be kind of cool, so we're going to work with them to do that. And looking forward to where that goes. Tonight, we've got an MOU with the Park District, hoping to explore ways to develop mutually beneficial uses of the farm, something beyond our education spaces, perhaps a pocket park, perhaps some community farming space where community members can actually do some farming I was able to work with a group of folks across the state of Illinois this year. We were able to increase career tech ed spending in Illinois by $10 million, probably the largest single one-year increase in state history, but we are still 100 million plus below in this state when you compare to our surrounding neighbors. So that's probably a 10-year piece of work that we're going to be working on. Senate Bill 5020, and I've talked to board members about this one. We were very, very close. It's one that needs to be picked up next year because what it will allow us to do is have more of our high school teachers teaching dual credit courses. And that will help us on our journey to serve our students better, to get to that path where we can have an associate's degree available here. It truly serves our kids in the very, very best way. Still working on the Cook County Pay Leave Act, lobbying a couple of key county commissioners to reconsider their vote. We just need one. We've got eight people to amend the ordinance. That's out of line with the state law, so we're working on that. If we can't get there, we have two other paths that we sort of queued up. One is legislative, the other is litigation, so we'll stay tuned on that. And then we are part of a social media lawsuit suing some of the social media companies for the really negative effects that they've had on our students and all the attendant mental health issues that we have. And so with that, I want to thank Eileen, Melissa, Melissa, Katie, Sean, Mary, George. Ginny, Brett? Got a great team. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ken. All right. So with that, let's move to any other updates from board members?
On May 14th, it's been retired. The agreement with that dates back to the 70, 1970, and they want to pursue another type of agreement and include Nutrure in that because Nutrure wasn't in the old organization. So I think that means that the meeting that's there on the calendar will be something else for the board member to attend. But Sean probably has more information on that than I do even since you're on the actual committee.
Yeah, there is, they'll be redesigning it. As Dr. Collins said, it really hadn't been updated or looked at in decades. And so this will, so for us, this will impact our adult learning at Maine East and some of the program we do with night school at Maine South. But more to come, there's a meeting in another two weeks, which I'll attend to, and as we start to build that out. So I'll be able to report back on that next week.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other updates?
And if I could just do, well, quick, but mostly just a shout out. So I just, since it is June, the school year is officially ended, I just wanted to really just give a huge shout out to our class of 2024 at all four of our schools. So that is very exciting. I also just wanted to give my appreciation to all the teachers, staff, administrators, all of the heart that you put in, all the work that you do with your students. We see you. We see your genuine care and support. And so, you know, we've, as board members, we've had great opportunities this last month to go to some teacher coffees, to meet with folks. We've attended the graduation ceremonies and just like what, what places of just joy and support. So I did want to make sure we mentioned that. So thank you, everybody. I also just wanted to do another quick shout out to Main West and their GSA. So their G, Main West GSA, along with Oakton Community College GSA and Speak Displayne's, held their third annual Pride Fest this past weekend. Again, it was a great, great event coming together in community in the rain, but we actually were able to meet it and pull it inside, and the facility was great. Every, there were, there was fun, there was laughter. So thank you to the, to Main West and the GSA for that. I think, and just one more. So the Main West GSA was recognized today at the Displayne's flag raising, and so lots of really great things and just reasons to celebrate all around. That's my update.
All right. Okay. If there's not anything else, let's go ahead and move on to our committee updates. I will actually be giving our education committee update. So our education committee met on May 6th, 2024. Committee members that were present were myself, board member Collins, board member Iker. It was actually a committee of the whole, so in addition, board members Lee, Owen, and Patrice were also in attendance. We called this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. There were no public comments. So the main topic of this meeting was actually the Innovation and Implementation of New Initiatives Committee Report. So our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Innovation, Dr. Sean Mesimer, noted this, the new initiatives committee came out of the last collective bargaining agreement. The purpose and scope of the committee is that administration and 207 EA will work together through productive conversation to discuss innovations and progress towards district goals as it impacts teacher working conditions, sharing the mindset to commit to educating our young people with input, balance, and getting back to basics. Priority initiatives focus on the instructional impact and grading policies as it relates to competency-based education. So since December 2022, groups of stakeholders have met to hold listening sessions, gather feedback, and implement district-wide staff surveys. Since then, staff and department chairs have been interviewed regarding ongoing challenges related to the implementation of CVE. To address this, action plans consist of rolling out elements of CVE through the adoption process rather than at the launch of the course, increasing PD and support for CVE-related changes while reducing PD requirements for staff involved in multiple initiatives. So future discussion will also be held regarding block schedule and the cell phone policy. There were no other updates at that time, and we adjourned this meeting at 5:58 PM. All right. With that, let's move on to our finance committee update, and I'll pass it to board member.
Thank you. Yep. We met on May 20th. Members present were Ed Iker and myself, as well as Terry Collins, Jen, Carla, Sheila, Mary, Ginny, Dave Olm, and Tatiana Lenama, Dr. Tatiana Lenama. Rather than go through all the many contracts that we discussed in this meeting, there were about seven of them. I'll hit a few of the high points from the meeting. Our third quarter budget update, where Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Mary Kalu, updated the committee on the third quarter budget, noting it is projected that the budget deficit will have a net improvement of $300,000. Revenue is projected to be 3.5 million less than budget, but is offset by expenditures projected to be 4.5 million less than budget. CPPRT will be 3.3 million less, and market to value adjustment on district investments will be a $1.3 million paper loss. The property tax recapture levy is $515,000 less, and capital projects are projected to be $4 million under budget. We expect a savings in special education outplacement tuition of $700,000, as well as a savings in the self-insurance fund of $323,000 due to the half-prema holiday in December. In addition, many accounts will not be completely expended. The budget continues to perform well. In other highlights, we will continue our participation in the Special Milk Program with the Illinois State Board of Education. There was a site license amendment with Advocate for the 2024-25 budget, and this pertains to a salary and benefits cost for a program coordinator and a nurse practitioner, which we share with one rook, District 225. The net of this is that the overall cost is approximately $500,000, but with the state grants and the split, it'll cost our district approximately $200,000. We also have a research agreement with Advocate Aurora Research. So for the past two years, the district has been working with the Narrative Medicine Program. We received a grant to provide a special three-minute mental health makeover in health classes to reduce stress. The program would like to continue to conduct a survey with the district and review prior to its administration. Parents will be informed and students can opt out. Advocates, legal department created this agreement. Survey data will be shared with the board. Also have noted transfer of funds from the Education Fund to the Debt Service Fund. Annually, a transfer of funds is made at the end of the year. The $2.3 million abatement based on the 2022 tax levy must be transferred by end of year from the Education Fund to the Debt Service to document the funding and expenditures of the Debt Service Fund. And one last highlight that I'll put in here is resolution approving payments. Since the board does not meet in July, a resolution is prepared for all vendors who will get paid in July. A complete list of vendors will be provided with the resolution going for approval at the June board meeting tonight. This allows payment in July and approval of the payments in August. There are a bunch of other things. It was a lengthy meeting that night, but I just wanted to call out a few of those items tonight for all of us.
All right. Thank you so much. If we can move to Buildings and Grounds update, board member Collins?
Just the Building, Buildings and Grounds Committee was held on May 20th, 2024. Members present were myself and Ginny. The meeting was called to order at 6:01 PM, and there were no public comments. The first and only item on the agenda was the Hamlin demolition. Bids were opened last week for the demolition of the structures on the property at 711 Hamlin. The budget estimate for the work was $190,000, which included demolition of the buildings, backfilling the foundations, and planting grass until the time a new construction plan is funded and approved. Three qualified bids were received with breakthrough enterprises as the low bidder in the amount of $210,000. In addition, the city of Park Ridge will require the district to approve the road and sidewalk up to the Hamlin Gate entrance of Maine South. There being no further business, we adjourn the meeting at 6:11 PM.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and move to monthly status of finances with Ms. Mary Kalu.
In your board packet is the April financial statement. You can see that revenues are pretty much in line with where they've been at this point in last year. You noted earlier that revenue had been tracking slightly up because we were ahead in our property tax receipts, but you can start to see that leveling up now. On the expenditure side, expenditures are in line as well. You'll see some areas where we're very close to budget, like the Torre Community Fund, because we've had some earlier expenditures in the account, but overall, we are performing very well. Also in here, as indicated in the finance committee update, is the detailed third quarter budget update, which will show an improvement to our budgeted deficit of about $300,000. Remember, Patrice went through kind of the mechanics of what is causing that variance in terms of some of the lower revenue, lower expenditures, and a little bit of an uptick in the revenue from the recapture levy. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on either the April financial report or the third quarter budget update.
All right. Thank you so much, Mary. If we can move to Instructional Services, Dr. Mesmer?
Sure. Each year in June, we bring you our college follow-up report. The information contained in the report is from the National Student Clearinghouse, which we subscribe to and have for years now. If you look at the memo, I point out a couple of things each year for a specific reason. One, obviously, it's the number of percent of our students that are going on to a post-secondary education. As you can see, that was an uptick from the past few years, which is nice to see because we're starting to see that group that experienced the pandemic as freshmen or eighth graders are now starting to come through. And so to see that number start to creep back up again, it's a very positive sign. We also saw that our freshman to sophomore persistence rate jumped to 94%. That's important when we talk about are our students prepared to go to be, to go to college and be successful? And so our five-year average previous to this was 90%, so it's a 4% increase over the past. The other thing that we're keeping an eye on pandemic-related is we did see a drop in the four- to six-year graduation rate. That's not totally unexpected, given what students have been through. That class started in the pandemic year, and so we did see a 7% drop of college attendance as well during that time period. However, we are tracking the class of 29 back towards where we were, in fact, a little higher than where we were at 47.2% for the four-year graduation rate. And the reason we look at four years is really it's a number we equate to how well are we doing, as Dr. Wallace had pointed out in his presentation, preparing kids for what they actually want to do when they get to college. Five and six years is more common than four. And so the more we can raise that four-year graduation rate, we take that as an indicator of counseling that we do related to our career programming. There are the things I just kind of pick out each time and sort of highlight. You can dive into those reports, which are all linked there. And I'll entertain any questions, please.
Do you have data on five and six-year graduation rates?
Yes, it is in the report. So usually, we're around 67% to 69% of our students who go to college are graduated by six years. And so, but it is broken down in the report by five and six-year graduation rates.
And, and...
And the way that the National Student Clearinghouse does it, if you have 1,000 students graduating and 600 of them go, they're saying you have a 60%, you know, rate. So the rate is actually deflated by the way they do their math. They don't do it for the higher end, but they do it for us. So that 47% includes kids that didn't go to school, didn't go to college right out of high school. So it's a little bit misleading. You have to understand how they do their methodology on the data.
If you look in the reports, you'll see there's a small stripe in each of the years, which are students who are entering for the first time, maybe in year two or year three upon graduation. And then you also see there's a re-entry rate, so students who may have dropped out at first year, we then go back, you know, two years later or something like that. So it's not perfect from the standpoint that not all schools report. Major ones, the big ones, that we send, most of our students do go. So it's a pretty good gauge in how we're doing and how our students are being successful beyond our borders.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, if no further questions, let's move on to our monthly update on FOIA requests. Dr. Wallace?
Number three this month, and Benjamin Clark is here. He has responded, or he is in doubt to respond.
Okay, all right, great, thank you so much. All right, and let's move to new course proposal and shoot it back over to Dr. Memmer.
Yes, so we, not unlike we did recently with Spanish, we were able to secure dual credit enrollment agreement with Dominican University for our Italian market program. So that enables us to do, as a student who has interest in gaining that dual credit, we use their syllabus, which is almost identical to begin with, but for $75 students with a senior better can gain free credits. No impact to FTE or anything of that nature, since it is existing course, this is now carried into a dual credit, not a two.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move into our action items. We'll start with our 7A and our consent agenda. That is our minutes approval for basics. If I could get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. No questions. Can we take the roll?
Collins?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Let's move to our board bills for May 2024. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and then I'll pass it over to Mary.
Sure. I'm assuming you're on item eight?
Oh, sorry. I, you know what, we're actually still on 7B, and I realize I could just take them together.
Do you want me to make a motion for the consent agenda of the items 7B through K? Aye. So I'll make a motion on 7B through I.
All right. Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, and so we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right, so that is seven. Let's go ahead and move to eight. This is the approval of bids and awarding of contracts. There are various ones on here, as mentioned in our finance report, so we'll just take those one at a time, although we did have good discussion. So let's start with 8A. That's CWG Intermediate Distribution Frame Switches Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Purchasing of technology equipment is exempt from the bidding threshold, but we did seek competitive quotes. The lowest quote for the switches for Main East and Main South was from CDW Governments Unit in the amount of $561,819.99. This is a multi-year switch replacement. We did some switches this year for Main West.
All right, no questions? If no questions, we can go ahead and take the roll.
Owen?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion on 8B? That's the CRW Incorporated Fiber Optic Cableing Replacement Contract.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
We are looking to put some wires into the intermediate distribution frames, the IDF closets, rewiring. We saw multiple quotes with CRW Inc. being the lowest quote at $31,028.
Questions? If no questions, take the roll.
Eiker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Can I get a motion on C?
This is Questime Uninterruptible Power Supply Replacement Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
This is an uninterrupted power supply replacement for the mainframe computer system in the major computer hub at Main South. Once again, we've got multiple quotes in Questime, provided the best quote at $84,996.54. This is needed because if there is a power failure, you want an uninterrupted power supply to your main computer system, otherwise you will have a computer system.
Thank you, no questions? All right, take the roll.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. Can I get a motion on item E? This is the First Student Charter Bus Transportation.
So moved.
Thank you.
So we provide charter busing for our athletic activity and field trips. We've been with M&amp;M Limousine for the last several years. First Student provided us the lowest per route cost, which is why you don't see a dollar amount, because the number of trips and the distance of those trips varies year to year. So we look at it from a route perspective and who provides the overall value for there. So we are recommending a three-year contract with First Student for the charter busing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Take the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
All right, next item is Panorama, the self-assessment and survey tool, and I think, Mary, you get a break, and this goes to Sean.
This is the
Oh, sorry, motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, okay.
This is the tool that we use to baseline school culture, specifically among students and staff. And so you might be familiar with the five essentials, which are required to do, but this is one that we use to really ask more questions that are more detailed and crafted toward our individual schools. So we've been using this for a few years, and it helps us track our progress and really sense of belonging in school.
Thank you. Any questions here? Take the roll.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. Can I get a motion on G? This is School Links Career and College Application Program.
So moved.
Second, thank you.
So this is, Dr. Wallace mentioned this as well this evening, this is how we really track all of our career of college programming. So from the internships to college applications to course selection, this is the mechanism by which we do that.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Take the roll.
Patrice?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Can I get a motion on H? This is Breakthrough Enterprises' Demolition of Property at 7-Eleven Hamlin.
So moved.
Second, thank you.
So this is a bid that we lack for the demolition of the structures on the 7-Eleven Hamlin property, which includes a house, a garage, as well as a large structure shed, barn. I don't know what you really call it.
Barn, it's a mort building.
It's a mort building. I knew the name for that.
Yeah, so
Common farm building.
We were fortunate that from our construction work, Breakthrough, who is a demolition specialist company, provided the low bid at $210,000.
Okay, any questions? Take the roll.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Item I, can I get a motion on Technology Software Contracts?
So moved.
Thank you.
So this is a list, there's 12 of them there, of our yearly renewals of either software or cloud-based packages we currently use. So they're all over $25,000, and they're one-year contracts, existing contracts.
So students actually work to use this a lot, or only the teachers or staff?
Of these, actually, students probably use 10 of the 12 that are listed.
Did you say they're all one-year? They're not all one-year, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, there was a three-year, two-three years.
Okay.
10 and 11.
Any other questions? Jenny, take the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
All right, next item, a motion on Quest Food Management, our food service provider.
So moved.
Thank you.
It's been many years since we did an RFP, so we went out and did an RFP for food services. We're calling it a rental offset. Quest was able to increase the amount of credit we received, so they feed without charging us about $327,000 worth of meals for students on free and reduced lunch. They also increased their rental offset guarantee to $149,000, bringing the value of this contract, making it better by about $90,000. But it should be pointed out that the total value that we receive is about a half million dollars each year from this contract. We've been very pleased with Quest. There were a number of other companies asked to walk through, but when they saw that we were pleased with our incumbent, the level of service that was being provided, they opted not to provide a proposal because they felt that they connected.
Thank you. Any questions?
That's 6.25%. That's the money that goes back to the district?
Yes, so it, but it's a, no matter what, it's $149,000. So let's say sales dropped, they would provide us a minimum of that $149,000.
Well, the average guarantee will be about $370,000
So
Providing all this food and meal services to the students?
Correct, so what we do is we set a level, and we set the level at the number of free and reduced meal value that we serve for the 2223 school year, and that was $327,000. So in the proposal, we requested that they provide that level of meals for our students, no additional cost to the district, and on top of that, they provided us an additional $149,000 as a rental offset. So what will happen over the course of the contract is, let's say, the amount of meals that we serve for students on free and reduced lunch goes to $350,000, because the number increases or the value of the meals increase. That offset amount at 149 will be reduced by any amount over the $327,973.50. So that will vary from year to year, but that is kind of the base level that they've included without any additional charge to the district.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Jenny, take the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on Curriculum Associates LLC Elevation Renewal?
So moved.
Second, thank you.
So this is the software package that we use with our multilabel students. It provides us with data analysis and also PD. So a teacher who has a student who's designated as multilingual in their course has access to this software as a resource.
Thank you. Questions? Take the roll.
Eiker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Final item, can I get a motion on the Lexia Learning Systems LLC Lexia Power Up?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
So this is a new product that will be piloting next year. It'll be used in our ML resource rooms, and so students who are accessing the regular curriculum in a multilabel course also have, will have a resource period. This will be support literacy education for those students with the potential to be used beyond our multilabel population and with some of our literacy classes.
Any questions? All right, take the roll.
Collins?
Aye.
Eiker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right, let's move, can I get a motion on item nine? This is the timeline for the 2024-2025 budget approval between District 207 and NSUR.
So moved.
Thank you.
Some overview and highlights is the tentative budget will go on display July 1st. In August, before our August Word of Education meeting, we have two public hearings. One is on the district budget, one is on the NSUR budget. The NSUR budget will then go that night for adoption, because it is required by law to be filed with the state by the end of August. The district budget will allow us to take any public comments that we receive in the month of August and incorporate them if we so need into the budget with an adoption date set in September. So this resolution kind of outlines that. We do put the budget not only on public display on our website, at the district office, but we send it to the public libraries within our footprint and ask them to put it on display as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
I know the answer is Illinois State Law, but I'm wondering why this isn't done? Like, if the fiscal year begins July 1st, why isn't, why aren't these things done before the beginning of fiscal year as opposed to like August 4th?
That is a really good question. I don't know. I don't know if it's a matter of planning. I think that if they had to be adapted earlier, things like, like I'll take that for instance, 80% of our revenue budget is based on property taxes. The 2023 tax levy that we passed in November, which we're already collecting money, we will start to collect by the 24th, that will collect next year too, hasn't been finalized. So really, 80% of our budget, I'm kind of doing a best guess scenario. And the further they push it earlier, the more kind of estimates you'd have to make. They, I think, so long, and that's part of the reason why we give budget parameters, because we tend to tell the board like, hey, we're going to start spending money. So this is kind of the parameters that we're going to do all of that under. I would, I mean, if the board would like to see it earlier, it would just push things like we have to do salary approval earlier to get everything earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say with NSERV, it's a little bit different. We have to wait until the money's allocated. So we know where our percentages are, but we don't know what the actual dollar amounts will be until the summer. And so that kind of lags behind passage and then the signing of those funds at the state level.
But I think in order to combat that, that's why we do the multi-year financial forecasts and everything. So we've kind of had a good idea of what next year will look like, even before the budget is adopted.
Any other questions?
Collins? Lee? Patrice? Owen?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. Let's move on to intergovernmental agreements and MOUs. We will take item A. Can I get a motion on the IGA for the Park Ridge Park District fireworks event at Main East?
Thank you.
This intergovernmental agreement really just outlines what we've been doing for many, many years between Park District, the City of Park Ridge, and the School District. It outlines our responsibilities, which are consistent with everything that we've done. It is a one-year MOU. Not sure why. I imagine that come probably a little bit earlier next year, we'll be signing another MOU because for as long as I've known, the fireworks have been at Main East High School. And I think it's something that the community has relied upon.
Thank you. Questions?
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle? I'm sorry. Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on the MOU with the Park Ridge Park District? This is the Park and Recreational amenities at 7-Eleven Hamlin.
Second.
Thank you.
So in front of the board tonight, the Park District has already signed this MOU. This is an agreement that we've worked with the Park Ridge Park District. It doesn't commit the board to anything beyond looking for ways to explore partnerships. So as I mentioned earlier, there's about three acres there, more than we probably will develop. So they would have interest in doing a pocket park and perhaps some community farming space and other types of things. At one point, they were going to do a beekeeping operation at, I think it's Sibley Park. So there's any number of things. Hopefully, that will be compatible with environmental programs that we build there and will also with our students. So even summer internship or opportunities would help.
And if I can just point out, anything with happens in the future, we have to come back to this.
Yes.
In a separate intergovernmental agreement. And it will go to both parties, both the Park District and the School.
Any other questions?
Owen?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Next, can I get a motion? It's an MOU for the 170-day sick leave for the 2027-2028 retirees.
So moved. Second.
This is for a specific group, that year's group of retirees. We normally award in one fashion or another 176 days, but we need to do it five years out so that there's no penalty incurred for the employer, for the staff, that MOU for flex staff.
Any questions? Can you take the roll?
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion? This is an IGA with the North Cook Intermediate Services Center. And I will pass, oh, let me get a motion, sorry.
So moved.
Yes, I did.
Motion? Can I get a second?
I did a motion on the Hamlin. I did, yeah. Yeah. I did that, and it was a second. So this is the sick one?
I have a motion on this by Carla.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll pass it.
So as you may remember, we have partnered historically with North Cook. North Cook does provide a number of different services. And signing the IGA just allows us to access those, one of which is the Safe Schools Program for students who have a significant disciplinary infraction that does require removal from one of our home schools. Then they also do provide student alternative learning opportunity programs, two different ones off-campus. And then we do on-campus have a student advocacy ALOP program. There's no cost, no direct cost to the district for that program. And for the other programs, there is no increase in cost for next year. But we do have students that are at the Safe Schools Program. And so we are asking them to continue to recruit from North Cook.
So all these programs are at North Cook?
Well, three of the programs are at North Cook. One is in our buildings at East and at West. And there is no direct cost for the SA ALOP.
That's the SA one.
But the ALOP programs and the Safe Schools Program are housed at North Cook. It's a little confusing because they have a number of programs. But to access them, you need a separate IGA for all of them. If anyone had any questions, you have a question.
Not all really great programs.
Yes. Our students have done well there, particularly when they needed additional support. So it's not just the education, but there's also some social emotional support that is provided, you know, with decision-making and peer relationships.
Any other questions? All right.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. That brings us to number 11. Can I get a motion on the resolution authorizing prompt payment of bills?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
As the board doesn't meet in July, we pass this resolution annually, and it outlines those vendors that we are authorized to pay in the month of July. Then we bring that list to the board at the August board meeting, and it is ratified.
It's one of my favorite motions, prompt payment of bills.
I know. I was like-
I don't know who gave it that name, but I get it. Yeah.
Why don't we?
Yeah.
We gotta be frantic. We stopped having July meetings.
All right. Any other questions?
Wait, I just, yeah, I do have a question. Wait, the stuff that you bring forward in August, and it's already paid though, right?
Correct. There are- You get two sets of bill lists. You got the August bill list for, which are those items that are checks that we've cut and will mail after the August board meeting. And then you will get the list of checks that we have cut that we would have released after the end of the July board meeting. So it's one you ratify because it's already gone, and the other one you approve.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Owen? Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on number 12? This is site license amendment with advocate for the 2024-2025 budget.
Thank you.
It's an annual amendment we do for the School Based Health Center. Budget is, it's a total cost to advocate of $370,000. And I pointed out in the memo that there are things that the district pays for directly, which is what brings the overall cost to both our school-based health centers at about a half a million dollars. Receive funding of about $300,000 for that, bringing the district's share to about $200,000.
And that's with the two school-based health centers?
Two, that is both school-based health centers.
Was it half of that last year?
No, because we actually only added a .5 nurse practitioner.
Okay.
And most of that, we had an implementation grant to cover that salary through December. And then we're using the foundation money from the benefit to cover that position from January until June of next year, with the hope then that we can write a second School Based Health Center grant and get some funding for the '25-'26 school year for the main West School Based Health Center.
Do they anticipate wanting more staff than would?
We believe that this staff will provide adequacy. It'll allow them to do a minimum of a halftime person at West. We may be even able to get West like an additional day here and there based on need. I would tell you that probably where they would advocate for more staff would be mental health, but they can't find it. It took us, it took us almost a year to find the current provider. And we kind of changed the type of licensure that we requested in order to even get that position filled.
And that halftime nurse is fully covered under the two grants?
So that halftime nurse is fully, it's covered until December with the implementation grant. And then we are using the money from the foundation benefit to cover that salary from January to June of 2025.
Thank you. All right. Take the roll.
Collins? Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee? Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on number 13? This is the research agreement with Advocate Aurora Research.
Second.
Thank you.
This is just a rather formal agreement, which will allow the narrative medical program to provide a small survey to maybe 150 health students that they've been working with. Get a copy of those results, I'm sure.
I have a question. Is there an IRB required for this? And the only reason I said that is because it's a research, it's a research proposal, right? It is under a research proposal. Huh?
I don't know that it's IRB.
Would we have to? Would we have? I'm just asking.
No, I have to think that advocates-
That, I mean, would the advocate have to do that?
Not a university-based one, no, but they have to.
No, but I mean, they're not. Here's my point. My point is, we don't have to do anything. They have to do something though, right?
Yeah. It took their legal department six months to write this. So I am confident that whatever advocate has to do is covered in this, like, the agreement.
Okay. And I think it's actually warranted in this because, you know, it's something that's new. And they should, they should consider. Okay. Thank you.
And I think that a chunk of this section looks like an IRB application as well. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. If no further questions, we'll take the roll.
Oh, just went for the three-minute, the three-minute mental makeover. Is that only for students, or do the faculty take part in that too?
They are, they have just, they piloted it with students. So they're doing it. I will tell you that at a School Based Health Center meeting, they went through and did it with the committee. And I mean, it was pretty quick. It was pretty, kind of, it's meant for, yeah.
The data shows it works.
Kind of makes you reframe your thinking. So it was pretty neat.
Just curious.